As I was saying, it's very, very important to always remember the people that have helped us. And we must always be a very grateful nation. Over the weekend, a disaster that we would never wish upon anyone has happened in Morocco. And my understanding is over twenty-five-hundred people so far have died in that earthquake. I say that because Morocco has been a very good country to Saint Lucia. You heard tonight, the fertilizer that has come for our farmers over the years. The scholarships that we've obtained and the number of Saint Lucians who are at universities in Morocco. And I can even say to you, at the UN and in many of our international relations, Morocco has been a very good friend to all of us. So before I begin my presentation tonight, I'd like if we can all stand for one minute of silence. Amen. I have to say that I am so touched and moved by the speakers that we've heard tonight. To see how the members of this party are maturing. And to see the passion that they still have for the development of our country. To Farah, and to Herod, and to Dominic, and to Guy Spider. Amazing, amazing job tonight. And I'd love you to join in giving them all a round of applause. The chairman of Soufere constituency branch that gave his welcome remarks, but also shared with us some very insightful facts. I want to change, maybe, I want to change if I can, maybe, the tone of our meeting. I understand when we say that we are in trouble, that that really resonates with many people in this country. Because not only is the country in trouble, but you are in trouble. People have labeled me many things. And we talk about some of the propaganda that was spoken. About a young man who, they labeled to you that I was a foreigner. That was somebody who they all could not relate to Saint Lucians. I don't share my life experiences a lot with people. Because as a person, I try to focus on the things I can change and just learn from the things that I've done in the past. And I've not shared with many of you my past. My grandmother and my grandfather, my grandfather was a civil servant. He eventually was a customs officer, he eventually became the controller of customs. And my grandparents had nine children. And it was very difficult for them to, it was very difficult for them to survive on one salary. And so my grandmother opened up a bakery. And they worked very hard. And they worked to make sure that their children could do better in life. And they were very fortunate. One of their children went off to MIT, the very famous university in Massachusetts, and became an engineer. And he actually came back to Saint Lucia and rose through the ranks in the Ministry of Works and actually became the chief engineer at one point. I have uncles who went to different universities. My father was the youngest boy. And by the time it came time for him to go to university, his father was very elderly. His father had left being a civil servant, and his father decided to build a little wooden boat. And they used to carry containers and come down to Soufere and to Canaries and to Ancelreie and to Viewfort. And my grandfather was struggling with the business. And so instead of being able to go to university, my father stayed to work on the ships. Want me to come closer? Fit back. Is that better? Is that better? So my father stayed to work on the ships. Because my grandparents had to send money to the other children that were abroad. And my father ended up foregoing going to university. My mother was a young woman growing up in the country of Ireland. And it was very oppressive in Ireland, and she decided to leave Ireland at the age of sixteen. And she went to England to study nursing. And she was on her way to Canada as a nurse. And she studied with three Saint Lucian ladies who also were studying nursing. And they invited her to come to Saint Lucia before she went to Canada. And when she came to Saint Lucia, she saw my father across the street and fell in love with him. And she said, "I'm going to marry that man." And she did. My father decided that he was going to stay in the shipping business. And he expected that his father would have given him the two wooden boats that he was working on. But his mother was a very hard lady. And she said, "No, you have to pay for the boats." So he had to work, and eventually he was able to, because a man who was leasing the boats from him in Puerto Rico was not paying his bills. And I remember when my father went to Puerto Rico, and he found out that in 1966, that he owed a half a million US dollars. And when he went to see the lawyer, the lawyer said to him, "My advice to you is to leave Puerto Rico just as quietly as you came in." And my father said, "No." And he moved all of us to Puerto Rico to pay off that debt and to try to make a better life for his children. So I left Saint Lucia when I was seven to live in Puerto Rico. That explains to you why I don't speak Creole. I speak Spanish. And I remember my father struggling in Puerto Rico. My mother became a secretary, and the hours that he worked and he put in, and eventually he became successful. And a lot of people believed my father has always been a wealthy man. He was not. He tells me the story, and many of you know these stories, where nine children have to be fed and you have one chicken to feed all nine children. And everybody's fighting for the little piece. And the chores that you had to do around the house, the eggs you had to go and get. Waking up at three o'clock in the morning to help your mother prepare the bakery to make bread early in the morning. My father never spoilt me. My father made me work for everything I had to do in life. When I was fifteen years old, my father said to me, "Who is going to pay for your university, young man?" I said, "You." He said, "No, no, no." He said, "If you want me to pay for your university, when you come home every single summer, every Christmas, and every Easter, you have to work to save money on an airfare." I used to have to take a bus from Canada to New York City downtown, and then take another bus to go to Kennedy Airport, to fly on Air France to go to Martinique, and spend the night at the airport in Martinique to fly on a small plane over here the following day to save money every single time. I say that because when I hear people tell me that I cannot appreciate what poor people are going through in this country, I did not have it as bad as many people do in Saint Lucia. But I know what it is to have parents who are struggling and they're trying to help their children, and they do everything to put their children first. You go to people's homes and you sit in their house at their table, and you talk to them, and you hear their stories. And it's only somebody who does not have a heart that would not feel for those people. So this idea that I don't appreciate poverty, I want to dismiss that from everybody's minds. From everybody's minds. You can imagine, I had the opportunity as a young man, who went to university, who got a master's degree, who's worked in Jamaica at Air Jamaica, who worked for the great Chris Blackwell, and had the opportunity to stay overseas and never come back to Saint Lucia to contribute anything to Saint Lucia. But as a young graduate, I came home to Saint Lucia and went to work for the government. Eight hundred dollars a month was my salary as an administrative cadet. I didn't start at the top, I started at the bottom. My roots in Soufere, forget about my family, started when I was a young economist with a gentleman called Clem Bob, who had a vision for developing downtown Soufere, and who was upset that we could not get more money. And it was Clem Bob who came up with the idea of building the dock. And I worked with him with the OES to put together a master plan to develop downtown of Soufere so that the people of Soufere could benefit. He and I did not like the idea that tourists would just arrive and get on a bus and go up to the Soufere Springs and come on a bus and go back to town and spend no time in Soufere. We were not going to change the law and make that happen compulsory. We said we are going to develop the village of Soufere. That is all way back in 1984 when we started that. I worked in planning, and as a young man, I played basketball. I played basketball in my high school team, we were undefeated. I was captain of that team. I played basketball at university in some of the best tournaments ever in Canada. I was captain of that team. I came back to Saint Lucia, and when I went to try out for the national team in Saint Lucia, you know what they told me? I want to tell you, it didn't start just now, you know. They told me to want any white men on the team. True. And they lost. And the next year, they invited me to come because my local team, the Lakers, we were winning. And every day for four years, I was down at the gardens from three-thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon until the sun went down. And I remember getting into a fight with my teammates. There was a coach called Rigler King. And Rigler got upset with me because he said, "I want to be the coach of the team." I said, "Rigler, I don't want to be the coach." So I asked the players, I said, "Let me ask you all a question. Have you ever asked yourself why Alan Chastain comes to the gardens every day?" I'm twenty-four years of age. I had a little apartment, I lived up in Rodney Bay. I could go around, I think I'm a pretty good-looking guy. So I could be going to the hotels and checking out the gals and everything else? But no, I was in the gardens playing basketball with the guys. I said to them, "Did I ever try to pick up any of your sisters? So maybe I'm here spending the time because maybe I want to get a gal." I said, "Every time there is to go fundraising, I went to the Boulevard to sell T-shirts." And I remember this old lady passing by me, and she looked at me. She goes, "A big white man like you should be ashamed of yourself. You here selling T-shirts in the Boulevard." I don't see myself as white people. I see myself as a Saint Lucian and a Saint Lucian who is willing to do everything that anybody else is willing to do. I am not better than anybody else when it comes to that. When I worked on my father's ships, I carried cement. I went into the septic tank to clean the septic plant. I did my time and started from the bottom. That is why I have a great appreciation of Saint Lucians art. But I had one sin in my life. One big, big sin in my life, and I need your help. My sin is, is that I believe in Saint Lucia, and I believe in Saint Lucians. And I believe that with every time a Saint Lucian is given an opportunity to compete on the world level, they can succeed. That's my sin. That is what drives me every single day. So when I hear these same people talk about that Alan Chastain is a prodigy of Canada, okay, because I left to get a better education. I left to get a better exposure and I brought it back to Saint Lucia. The same Julian Alfred that they will sit there and celebrate. She's not a prodigy of Jamaica because she had to leave Saint Lucia to become a star. And I'm proud of what she's achieved. And I have no doubt that Julian Alfred will never forget where she came from, and she will do everything to make Saint Lucia a better place. To you here tonight that are in Soufere, you have gotten to know who Alan Chastain is. I didn't want an ordinary square in the heart of Soufere. I wanted the best. I wanted a square that everybody would feel proud of. And when I saw Saint Lucians coming from overseas and the first place they wanted to go to was to come and see the square in Soufere, I know we have succeeded. When we talked about fixing up the mini-stadium, the first thing that we did is we put the lights. And when we came back into government after five years, they had done nothing at the mediums, at the mini-stadium. We went in now and put in a world-class football field with a world-class track with even better lights than we had before. And who has not stood in the stadium and looked out and saw the view of the Petons and go, "This is paradise in the world." And yet today, after two years, and even the success that our athletes have had overseas, they still cannot certify the track and field tournament so we can bring Julian Alfred to have a tournament in Saint Lucia right here in Soufere? No. Herod told you, the people from New Development, government after government made promise after promise. And every time they got into government, they would tell you the same thing. "Oh, that was private property. We can't fix it." This United Workers' Party with Herod Stanislas, we fixed the roads and the sidewalks for the people in New Development. We're the ones who wanted to convert the factory into a major shopping mall for all the artisans of Soufere, Canaries, and Choiselles, that this would be the heart. I want you to think for a moment of the vision of what we were talking about. When you uplift the town of Soufere, it encourages now all the tourists to want to walk into Soufere. And when they see your playing field and they see your roads and your sidewalks, they go, "Wow." Look at the graveyard. We came and we fixed up the wall, painted up the wall. The one thing they have left to do is to redo all the gardening there to make it look like the most beautiful graveyard. Where we, the people who look at it, will say that these are people who respect their family. Their last resting place. The dead people cannot do it for themselves. We must do it for them. We must be a country of pride. When we talked about village tourism, village tourism was to empower the people of Saint Lucia. About creating an entity that would provide all of the accounting, all the marketing, help them with their designs, help them with their training. Government would put that money in for you all. And to make and beautify the village so when people are staying at a little villa or they're staying at an Airbnb, they can come down tonight and have dinner and they go, "This is paradise." The work that we did in Ancelreie. And then now let's talk about Viewfort. In order for Saint Lucia to make a quantum leap, we knew that Castries, Soufere, and Viewfort had to go to another level. And we had to bring an international standard to Viewfort. So when you hear Labour Party telling you horses before hospitals, what does that mean? What does that mean? A gentleman, Taylor King, came to Saint Lucia, put thirty million US dollars of his own money, because Labour Party told you that's not his money. Two years, they can't prove that to you. He didn't sell one passport. His money. All the young people that were working there at the horse racing track, they said it could never happen. We had the first horse race at the end of 2019. The whole world came to see Saint Lucia's racetrack. The Caribbean was shaking in their boots and said, "I cannot believe what I've seen." That we wanted to put a home port in Viewfort. Why? That people now would be closer to Soufere. That we can develop the South, all the tours that we have in the South. Why you want to put more cruise ships into Castries? Use Castries for something else? Allow us to develop the South. Allow young people to stay in their rooms where they grew up and their parents and make a worthwhile living for themselves. And when I said to all of you, "What? Ching, ching, ching in your pocket." What was that? That ching, ching, ching was your money. That's what I was saying. You don't have to wait for the government for a handout. You would own your own money. You can convert your own businesses and have your own businesses. Time and time again, we had a vision and we still have a vision for this country. When a government can tell you, "You cannot eat roe's." I mean, stop for a moment and ask yourself, "What does that mean?" Really? You can't eat roe's? Now, we can make a joke of it, but I can say, "Well, the roe's are eating us." But the issue is, is that they're not replacing it with nothing. They don't have a plan to develop the country. They don't have a plan to put ching, ching in your pockets. Instead, they want to put a chain around your necks. And that chain is called "Fair." That's what that chain is. It's fair. And the silence you hear around Saint Lucia today despite how much suffering is taking place is the fear that people have to say anything. And when you have the doctrine of the Labour Party, it's what? Kill it. St. Jude's Hospital, kill it. HIA, kill it. Rodney Bay Road, health care in Saint Lucia. Education in Saint Lucia. Paraculture in Saint Lucia. And why do they want to kill it? Because they want to make you dependent on them. But it's not taken too long for Saint Lucians to see for themselves that action speaks louder than words. Look what was taking place in our country. Look where we were going. And when a person can tell me, "Oh, I don't like to see what's taking place in Viewfort because Alan Chastain wants to make Viewfort into Miami." No, I wanted to make Viewfort as good as Miami. And instead of Saint Lucians paying their money to fly to Miami, I wanted the people from Miami to pay the flight to Saint Lucia. That's what we want. But today, thirteen hundred dollars US, fifteen hundred US dollars to fly to Miami? But the first thing they did when they got into government is to do what? They went to Miami. They even went to Dubai. How many people they took to Dubai? And yet Saint Lucia, who wanted to build islands in the ocean to make it more attractive and to make it more successful, we can't have Dubai here. But they get to travel and go to Dubai, and you, the taxpayers, have to pay for it. What was pointed out tonight? I had a choice. My father had land on the beach, and I can build a hotel on the beach. No, I built the hotel in Rodney Bay, and we're the ones who came up with the idea Rodney Bay Village. To create opportunities for Saint Lucians to succeed because not everybody has a piece of property onto the beach. I put my money where my mouth was. I have learned to depend on myself. Take Deadweight. Other than being a messenger for a couple of years, his entire life has been what? Living off the taxpayers' money. He's never made a dollar by himself. It's you, the people, who put him there. And he wants to come and talk about that he's the patriot? You can't even finish a road at Millennium Heights. Are you, I mean, have you all driven on that road to see what's going on there? Who he wants to blame? As Guy said, there's no way under United Workers' Party that we would allow a Trinidadian firm to come to Saint Lucia and do that work, that work that Saint Lucians can do. No way! And if we had any pride in this country, we would all go up and line up on the streets and prevent them from moving their machines to come and do the work that Saint Lucians can do. But probably one of the saddest stories in Saint Lucia is St. Jude's. The Labour Party criticized us, crucified us because we said it was going to cost over a hundred million dollars to finish the hospital. Remember that? And they said, "Oh, it's only going to cost ten million dollars in some chemical and some paint." Well, they've been in for two and a half years. Why have they not put in the paint and the chemical and moved in? Because they cannot. And so here it is, we spent a hundred and forty million dollars on building a world-class hospital building. And all it would take is fifty more million dollars and six months and we could move into the ground floor of that building. Ninety beds. They are now going to come to the house on Tuesday to borrow money from the Saudi Arabians to spend two hundred million dollars on a new, on a old but new hospital. How does that make any sense? How does that make sense? A world-class hospital with a world-class airport, with a world-class seaport, a world-class horse racing track, a world-class tourism destination was going into Viewfort. And they have killed it. That's what they've done. And exactly what Harald said. The victimization is not to give you healthcare. The victimization is to make you pay more taxes. The victimization is not to give you an education. The victimization is to make sure that the judicial system is not working. The victimization is not to fix the roads. I want you to think for a moment that if you were a taxi driver or a bus driver, you're now paying the highest gas prices you've ever paid. Plus seventeen dollars. I don't think we've ever paid seventeen dollars for gas. You're now putting a two and a half percent levy or tax on all of your spare parts, your tires, your shocks, everything. And even the car you bring in, two and a half percent tax. And now, the tourism is going down, so there's less traffic. So you have less business. And if that is not bad enough, they're not fixing up the roads. And our taxi drivers and our bus drivers are saying, "Nothing." Silence. And that is not the St. Lucians that I know. The St. Lucians I know would stand up for what is right. And there's no way what they are doing to the taxi drivers and to the farmers of this country could be right. And we need to let our voice be heard. But I think you've heard it tonight. Every single person here has said one thing. We are not scared in United Workers' Party. We are going to fight for every single St. Lucian. We're going to do everything that we can to improve the lives of St. Lucia. Now, Philip Peir said that we in the United Workers' Party go to bed and every morning when we wake up, we try to figure out what we can do to hurt St. Lucia. Right? I want to say to him that if I genuinely, or any one of us genuinely wanted to hurt St. Lucia, we would leave him there. Philip Peir and the Labour Party are the biggest disaster to take place in the history of St. Lucia. They have been like a hurricane. They have destroyed agriculture. They have destroyed tourism. They've destroyed the infrastructure in our country. They have increased the cost of living in our country. They have increased unemployment in St. Lucia. They've added on more taxes than any time that we've had in history. United Workers' Party was bringing taxes down and the Labour Party is now bringing the taxes back up. There is more victimization than there's ever been before in our country. And we are now suffering under a doctrine called "Kill it." And we're now living in a country of fear. Instead of living in a country of hope and prosperity, in a country of pride. A country in which we have a constitution where we are allowed to have freedom of expression, freedom of movement. Look what they're doing to the people in Soufere and Viewfort. An ordinary police officer can stop you on the road and search you. An ordinary police officer can go into your house and search you. An ordinary police officer can stop your car and search you. An ordinary police officer can force you to stay in your house for seventy-two hours and we say, "Nothing." We say, "Nothing." I want you to know that despite the despair and despite what we see, that this country is in trouble, we're not here to celebrate. We are working to put together a plan that was even better than we had before. We will be announcing candidates that you will be all proud of. Candidates that are going to work together for one single goal. To make St. Lucia the best place to live, the best place to work and the best place to visit. But, as Harald and Guy and Dominic and everybody's told you tonight, we have to agree that we have to change. And my son told me, he wrote a poem because he was getting bullied in school as a young boy. And the poem ended with, "I will always forgive, but I will never forget." Forgiveness is a great virtue. But if you forget, it means you've not learnt anything. And what we must never do is we must forgive those who did not know what they were doing. But let us never forget what the Labour Party is willing to do to conquer this country and to destroy this country. We must never forget and we must keep that in our hearts. And let us take back St. Lucia as soon as we can. Let's get ready to go into the streets. Let's get ready to hear our voices be heard. Let us rise together. Let us care and let us collectively make this a great country. Thank you.